It is now being 6:01, we do have a quorum. I'm going to open the February 18th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. Welcome all, I just want to read a statement. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order superseding certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, in the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Halifax Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance, the members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. First order of business is Joanne on?
I haven't seen her yet, no.
Should I have waited?
No, I mean, you can certainly wait a couple of minutes.
Okay, well, just wait a couple of minutes because I need to get a row call attendance.
Yeah.
Prior to starting.
Let me text her. I think I have her in my cell. Nope, nope. Alan, I don't know if you have her in your cell, but I don't.
I do not.
Well, let me email her. I've sent a note to both Joanne and to a lot of, I hope one of them might be reading their email at this point.
Okay. Is Rick Mary, Rick Mary's not on as of yet, right?
I don't see him in yet, nope, neither he nor Mark.
I hope they remembered it was six. Charlie, I suppose she could always use the tape to record minutes. Or should we just wait to hear back from her?
Just a minute or two. Bert said they're having technical difficulty. She won't, she said, "Don't wait, she'll watch the video."
Okay, all right. The first order of business is to, we'll take a vote. Actually, I need to know who's participating in the meeting tonight.
Gordon Andrews.
Gordon?
Amy Troop.
We've got Gordon, Amy, and Ellen Diaz so far. So we do have a quorum. I'm going to begin because I know that Amy's got another matter to attend to. Our first order of business is going to be some discussion and a question and answer period on the site plan review and special permit process for the planning board. I asked Attorney Questle to participate in this program or to come up with a program for the board members that are new and to refresh maybe some of the older board members. I just want to point out that Attorney Questle has been practicing law for about 21 years in land use. She's a teacher for the Massachusetts Continuing Legal Education and Zoning Conference, a member of both the Boston Bar Association and the Massachusetts Bar Association. I just want to point out that I'm going to let Attorney Questle begin. We've discussed, we'll do the site plan process first, and then we'll have a question and answer period for board members. There will be no public participation, but if they're board members, I asked some of the ZBA members to listen in. If they do have some questions that she can answer, we'll be more than happy to let those in. So Attorney Questle.
So, thank you. So I did provide a PowerPoint. I didn't know if you wanted me to put that on the screen or just go through it.
I'm supposing that some of the folks got it late, so if you don't mind putting it on the screen, that might be helpful.
Sure, so Charlie, do you want to share or do you want to?
Go ahead, I'm going to put all participants at this point, so it's now it's open, should be.
So is this going off the packet we have?
Yes.
Okay, so Charlie, do you have it on your screen?
Not yet, no.
Okay, my share screen is still down.
Okay.
So I tried this last night and it didn't work either. Even though I did everything they said to do.
I've given permissions for everybody to share screens, so that's, I believe, the limit of what I can do.
Okay.
While you're starting it up.
Yeah.
Let me see, I believe I have it. Let me share it and that might help.
Okay. So I'll start, I will start. So what we're going to talk about tonight is site plan and special permits. We're going to talk about how you guys can draft a defendable decision with regard to site plans and, you know, special permits. With regard to special permits, we're going to get into that a little bit more because it's a very...
Somebody might need to mute off.
So site plan is its own animal, which is why, which is why I wanted to, you know, go through that a little bit more than a special permit. The first thing, obviously, I know that you guys all know this, but the first thing, when an application comes in, you have to understand, you know, which bylaw is at issue here. Is it a special permit or is it site plan, you know, pursuant to Section 28? The planning board, so with regard to site plan granting authority, which is the SPGA, the planning board has certain special permits that they are the special permit granting authority. Other special permits are granted by the ZBA. Under 40A, Section 1A, a special permit granting authority may be the planning board, the zoning board, or the Board of Selectmen. So that's why there's kind of a mix as to the planning boards does some special permits, the zoning board does other special permits. But when you have, you know, when you have an application come in, you want to talk about what is the special relief? You know, what is the proposal? What are the standards that you have to apply? Those would be listed out in the bylaw. And then what are, you know, then you have to take it into what are the facts that you see? What's on the ground, what's going on, that kind of thing. So with regard to site plan review, it's a function of a local bylaw. It is not within, it's not within 40A, so it's not within the zoning act. The purpose is to regulate the use. I'm sorry, the purpose is not to regulate the use, it's to regulate how that use is implemented. So site plan is very unusual because you're actually regulating an as-of-right use. However, with that being said, it's not allowed to be denied. It can only be conditioned unless there's absolutely, oh, great, Charlie, so I'm on four. Thank you. Right here. So unless there's no set of conditions that can satisfy.
They said they were...
Yo, just take, just do something. How many did you get this year? How many did you have? Two?
So, so far.
He got two, he wounded one, actually ended up finding it later in the year and died.
Mike, can you see where that's coming from?
Okay, so so far, there's been no, there's no reported decision, there's no land court decision that upholds the denial of a site plan for an as-of-right use. So, you know, we're still, we're still kind of in that. If it's an as-of-right use, you can't deny it, you can condition it. The next slide. With a special permit process, there is discretion. So there's a difference between site plan and special permit. Special permits can be required for certain uses, you know, and then special permits are only granted when the use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. And then again, I went, I've already gone through the special permit granting authority. And then under 40A, Section 9, special permits, that describes the use, the rules, regulations, timelines, the public hearing requirements, all of that. So when a, when a special permit comes in, you know, you have 65 days to hold a hearing. And then after, when the hearings closed, you have 90 days to issue a decision. And so then, this is just in general, you can go to the next slide, I'm sorry. So in general, this is in general with any, with any decision you're making, to have, you know, a defendable decision, you want to, when the application comes in, you want to circulate it to all of the boards that are required to see it. So in your site plan review, section, under Section 28 of your zoning bylaw, there are a list of boards that get your, that get the application. So you want to make sure that's done. You want to, you know, conduct the public hearing, and we'll get into that in a little bit. You want to close the public hearing, deliberate vote, and then you want to perfect the decision, which is sending it to the town clerk's office. And so the next slide, you, for the procedures, you want to, when you open up the hearing, you want to make sure you have a quorum. You want to explain, you know, the board's procedures to the public. Obviously, now that we're in COVID, you have to read the statement that Alan read tonight. You want to explain what the relief is, whether it's a special permit, whether it's site plan review. You want to allow the applicant to present the application. You know, you can allow participation, presentation, and questions. And, you know, that's within the chairman's purview because, you know, as a public hearing, you know, public comment should be taken. However, you do not have to allow each member of the public, you know, 30 minutes. You can limit the time. And in some very controversial hearings, you know, the chairman will state that the public has three minutes, you know, to decide. And then they can't come back up to the microphone until all of the people have spoken. You know, there are things that you can limit it, the chair can limit it. You want to keep official minutes of the meeting and the public hearing. And then the next slide. So, you know, the best practices for just conducting these hearings is you want to be respectful to the applicants and the public. You want to keep an open mind, avoid conflict of interest. If there are any conflicts, any question of conflicts, you can always call the attorney of the day. So I'm on the next slide, Charlie.
Yeah, next slide, Charlie.
And then the most important thing is that if you do get an extension from the applicant, you know, please, please, please make sure that that extension is in writing, that it includes enough time for you to make it, you know, make your decision, put it into writing and get it with the town clerk. So you don't want to make, you don't want to sign an extension that gets you to the next meeting because all of a sudden it's 10 o'clock at night, you have to draft a decision and you have to file it with the town clerk, well, the town clerk's asleep. So, you know, that's not possible. So make sure that you add in some time that you can get that done. So for the next slide, you know, before closing, you want to ask if there's any additional information because once you close a hearing, that's it. You cannot accept any further information. You can take a vote to close the hearing, that's a majority vote, even on a, even on a special permit, which requires, you know, four fifths, that is a majority vote. You know, and then you, you then take the vote and you make, you know, making the decision. So the, the one thing is that I wanted to point out is that if a motion to approve the petition or the application, if it's made and it fails, then the project is denied. You do not, it's not necessary to take a second vote, you know, denying the actual project. You can, but, but it's not required, it's not required, there's case law. So the requirements for voting, you want to include in the motion, you want to include the identity of the applicant or property owner, the full address, or, you know, even sometimes it's just Lot 7 map, something. And then the jurisdictional basis for the decision. So for example, if it was site plan review, you would be granting them site plan approval pursuant to Section 167-28. You want to state findings of fact, you know, under the, under the zoning bylaw. And then, you know, required determinations of law, reasons for the decision, which is essentially findings of fact. And so what you could do is you just look at your zoning bylaw and you say, you know, the traffic circulation is adequate, you know, things like that. And then I always encourage my boards to put in that, you know, any relief not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied. It's a good idea, it's not a game changer, it's not, it's not going to, you know, it's not going to change much, but it's helpful. And then the next slide. And then, you know, you want to have a procedure for drafting, finalizing, and filing the decision. You know, somebody should review the decision to ensure that it accurately, you know, reflects the vote. It includes all of the conditions, if you are implementing conditions, that's important. And then you want in the, in the decision, and I think all of your decisions are adequate with this, that there is a recording requirement because all of your decisions have to be recorded at the registry. And then you want to file the decision with the town clerk. So you don't want to, you know, you want to avoid constructive approval. So for example, it's 45 days under site plan. Under special permit, I didn't put that in because it's a little bit different because it's 90 days from the close of the hearing, so you never know when that actually is. But with your site plan, with Section 28, it's 45 days, unless there's a written extension, of course. You know, for a special permit review, a special permit, it regulates that middle tier of uses. So there's uses that are, you know, so offensive, they're prohibited, and then those that are, you know, they're very innocuous and they're allowed. So then you have this middle section, that's what I consider, you know, special permits. You know, there's a limited criteria in your bylaw, you know, not more detrimental to the neighborhood. And then, you know, your bylaw gets a little bit more detailed as to that. But, but you cannot, you know, you can't refuse to issue a special permit for reasons that are not in your bylaw. And the statute is not more detrimental. So as always, the statute is the base, and then your bylaw can add things on. And so, you know, you have to base your, you cannot, obviously, you can't base your decision on the applicant. It has to be on the project. And I know you guys don't do that, I just put that in anyway for all of my training. So the next, so the, you know, this is the typical criteria for site plan review. You know, vehicular and pedestrian traffic, parking, loading, utilities, you know, the impact on the neighborhood and the natural environment and the impact on town services. The only thing that I would say to that is that, you know, you can't deny a special permit for the last guy that comes in. So if you have all of these special permits that are impacting, impacting the neighborhood, and they're all of the same caliber, you can't punish the last guy. And so, you know, that's difficult. And we're waiting for a case to come down that says that, you know, that the last guy is doing it. And so you guys are allowed to, you are allowed to deny the special permit. But right now, it's basically in a vacuum. So will this person impact the neighborhood? And we can't go on, we can't look back as to how many special permits have been granted in the past. And then there's an impact on town services that, however, can, that can never be a sole reason for denial because the reason for that is because the applicant cannot control town services. You know, when granting a special permit, you want to make an affirmative finding. You know, you want to go through your bylaw and make your affirmative finding. Now, your bylaw, you have, for the planning board, you have certain special permits that you grant. And each section has different findings, which is, so I didn't put them all in here. For example, with a marijuana treatment facility, you have, you know, different findings than you do for, you know, Water Resource Protection District. So you want to just, you want to go to the bylaw and follow that. And it also, the zoning act and your bylaw allows you to, to issue conditions, to implement conditions, I'm sorry. With a special permit, the procedure is that public hearing is within 65 days of filing. Decision is with 90 days of the close. Obviously, times can be extended. They have extraordinary voting requirements, meaning it's a super majority. So you're a five-member board, so it's four out of five. And the permits, they lapse up to three years, depending on the zoning bylaw. Your bylaw does not specifically state in general when a special permit expires. However, each section of your bylaw sometimes mentions when a special permit expires. But that is something that I want to work with you guys on. Associate members are allowed to vote on special permits if they're designated by the chair. And then a five-member board, you guys are allowed to have one associate member. Now, the associate member can only act if there's an absence, inability, conflict, or vacancy. So if you have all five members and the sixth, the associate member is there, you can't say, "I'm going to have these four plus the associate." It's only when there's not someone there that the associate can act. The next slide. You know, this is just the procedure for implementing, you know, when a special permit comes in, an application comes in, you want to notice, and the notice should have the name, description, the street address or assessors, the date and time of the public hearing, subject matter, meaning, it basically just means, you know, what they're looking for, you know, in the bylaw. And the same thing with the nature of the relief requested. So it's important to state what the, you know, what the bylaw, no, what the applicant is looking for. So if the applicant is looking for, you know, an addition, you know, you want to put the addition to a single-family house requires a special permit pursuant to XYZ. Because if the applicant comes in to the board and the board decides that they actually need a different relief, provided the public is aware of what they're looking for, the board is able to switch that relief. It doesn't happen a lot, but it is something that makes it a little bit easier for applicants and boards to be able to switch the relief from, say, a variance to a special permit or a finding, or it's not going to happen a lot with the planning board. It would happen more with the zoning board of appeals. The publication of a special permit has to be advertised, and then the posting has to be, it has to be posted. And then for site plan review, under Section 28, and again, there's no state statute equivalent to this. It has, it is implemented by the planning board. And it applies to the construction or the external enlargement of any commercial, industrial, business, institutional, apartment, multifamily, I think that's multifamily, but your bylaws has multi-dwelling, and municipal use. And then it also applies to school building or public utility structures. No such use can be expanded or established, you know, even within an existing building. So even if there is an existing building, they still have to come to site plan review without, they have to get site plan approval. The next slide, the, so the process for this is that the application's filed with the town clerk. They have to file 10 copies. The town clerk is to distribute it to the following boards. You know, obviously, the planning board, but the Board of Health, Building Inspector, Highway, Water, Board of Appeals, Conservation, Board of Selectmen. And then they also notify that a fire in place, that there's availability to look at it. And then within 30 days, those review boards submit comments. And the planning board, so the planning board, you guys do not act until 30 days. So you don't act until the 31st day. And that's for, that's the ability for these comments to come in. And I think that's a really great idea because it's really, it's good to have comments from other boards. And so, so it's nice to have that time period. And the next, the next slide is that, you know, you want to, you want to note the recommendations of these review boards in your decision, and you explain any divergence. So if there's anything different, so if someone says that they should, that you should require a row of planting, a screen of, you know, deciduous vegetation on the south side, and you guys allow a fence, you just want to state that in your decision that a fence is more appropriate and will do a better job, or, you know, something like that. And then the failure of the planning board to act within 45 days is a constructive approval. Obviously, you can, you can extend that 45 days by, you know, in writing with an extension from the applicant. And then we go into the criteria for a special permit, I mean, I'm sorry, for site plan review. When you consider site plan review, you're trying to, you know, you're trying to control a use that's allowed, and so there's reasonable controls. So, you know, you want the protection of adjoining premises, the convenience of safety of vehicular and pedestrian traffic movement, you know, and that's, these first two are, you know, do you need screening from the adjacent properties? With regard to, you know, vehicular and pedestrian traffic, should, you know, should there be, you know, you've got a parking lot here, should we have screening here? You know, it's things like that. The, the next one, the next slide is the adequacy of the methods for controlling surface water. You know, and this is important, that you want to have no runoff. So basically, they need to, they need to comply with stormwater regulations. And then you have, you know, off-street loading. And again, that's more, for example, a warehouse, something like that. And then, you know, the aesthetic compatibility with, um, other, with uses, you know, existing or allowed on, on adjacent properties. So, um, you know, that, that, that one's a tough one, because, um, you know, it, it's very subjective. So, um, you know, I, I would combine that with something else. Um, and maybe, maybe, you know, definitely when, if there's some kind of condition based on that, I would make sure that it's very well explained. Um, and then the next is the, um, residential privacy provided by the site and unit layout and the adequacy, um, you know, for expansion. Um, the biggest thing that I find in my, um, in, in my practice with regard to site plan is screening. It, it's very, very important. And, and not only is the screening from, to screen the property, um, from adjacent properties, but also the screening on site. So for example, you know, you don't want to, you know, somebody's driving by the site, the first thing, they don't want to see the, the dumpster area. You know, they want, you, you want that in the back. Um, so these are the kind of things that site plan is, is very, very good for. Um, and so the next slide is, um, with the case law regarding, um, site plan. Um, you know, obviously the zoning act does not contain a provision. Um, and then, you know, courts have interpreted the statute to allow site plan review for limited purposes. You, you know, your bylaw cannot say every single building permit in town requires site plan approval. So that means that somebody that's going to put up, you know, a very small addition or an entry, you know, an entryway or something would require site plan. You can't do that. Um, and then where site plan approval is required for a use or a structure, um, and that use is as of right. The, you know, you cannot create a de facto special permit, meaning you can't say this is more detrimental to the neighborhood and we're denying site plan. Um, and then, you know, the uses and structures, structures as of right can be made subject to, you know, to your site plan review, but that's, but that's it. Um, and then in several decisions, you know, the appellate courts have held that, um, when you're, you know, when you're conducting site plan review, um, you know, your authority to deny for an as-of-right use is very, very limited. Um, you know, generally it, you can impose reasonable terms and conditions, um, but you don't have the discretion to deny. Um, you know, and, and basically the court has said, you know, site plan review has to do with the regulation of permitted uses, not their prohibition. Um, and then, um, sorry. Um, they've also held that, um, for use allowed as of right aboard, um, you can only deny it where the plan is so seriously deficient in important elements that it's so intrusive on the interests of the public in one regulated aspect or another, that rejection by the board would be tenable. Um, that hasn't happened since, I will tell you, um, that, that really hasn't happened since, you know, prudential cap- in Castle Hill, things like that. Um, well, a prudential, because Castle Hill said that there is no discretion. Um, in fact, I, um, today, Tuesday, got a decision, um, you know, from the land court where our board had denied site plan for a large, large, um, solar facility and, and, um, we were, we were not successful in that. Um, you know, site plan, um, it's an informational tool. It's designed to show, you know, the relationship of the site to adjacent uses, um, you know. If it's, you know, dimensional, the dimensional in-use criteria for an as-of-right use, if they're satisfied, then unfortunately there's not much we can do. So with site plan review, if you have a use that's allowed and they are meeting the setbacks, um, there's not, there's no discretionary ability to deny that use or that location. You do always have the ability to condition it. Um, which, which I, I do think is, um, you know, is important. Um, and then the, the next is the conditions. Um, you know, they may be imposed. Um, and, you know, they can deal with anything, you know, from aesthetics to proposed use, traffic, water runoff. Um, and unsightly, it, and again, should be shielded from view. And again, that's where site plan is most important, I think. Um, but, you know, conditions cannot be imposed that would, you know, fundament- fundamentally change the project and change that proposed as-of-right use. So you can't make, you can't turn conditions into a denial essentially. Um, and then the next slide are the conditions. Um, so, you know, the motion on the application for a site plan approval, um, it should articulate the conditions of approval. You know, and state the compliance with those conditions is required. Um, you know, whenever possible, you want to refer to any documents outside the decision. So for example, if, um, you know, there's something that's not shown on the plan, you want to make sure that whatever has been done, whatever change has been made is part of the record. The plan, if the plan shows everything that you guys need and, and addresses all of your conditions, then you're good. Um, and then you want to, um, identify circumstances where, you know, strict adherence is not required. So for example, you know, the type of tree. If you guys say that you want to have a vegetative screen, but you, you know, you're not particular as to exactly what kind of vegetation it will be, that's fine, as long as it's vegetation is fine. Um, so reasonable can, um, conditions are screening, you know, limits on parking, landscaping, noise, maintenance. Um, so for example, dumpster require, you know, locations. Um, you know, moving parking from the front to the back, provided it's still within the setback for parking. Um, the vehicular and pedestrian movement, meaning switching sidewalks, um, things like that, dust control, hours of operation. Um, all of the conditions though have to be definite and, and that, you know, they have to be actually stated. Um, and so that is it for that PowerPoint. So, um, Alan, I didn't know if you wanted to take questions on that now and then I could do the, um, the housing choice bill, or if you wanted me to run through the housing choice act quickly.
Uh, no, I think I'd rather have, let's, let's continue on with any questions and answers on the site plan process itself. Um, the site plan and the special permit, uh, they're kind of commingled. Um, so I, I'll start taking questions and whether they're on site plan or special permit, then, um, you can handle either one of them. And I am going to start, if it's okay, with those that I can see. Gordon, you seem to be first. Do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, I have a couple. Um, Amy, um, you were saying that as-of-right, um, gets allowed. I understand that. If it's a right that's allowed, but they're exceeding the setbacks, is that a condition that can deny it?
No. So if they are exceeding the setbacks, they need a variance from the zoning board of appeals. If they do not get a variance from the zoning board of appeals, it cannot be built. So what you want to do is you want to make a condition that a variance is required.
Okay. So if, if there's a building that's going in and it's in the business area and every other building meets those setbacks, it's okay if they get the variance to go closer?
Um, that wouldn't, no. What I'm saying is that your, um, decision would state that a variance is required. So if they get the variance, that's not up to the planning board or me. That would be up to the zoning board of appeals and they would have to meet the requirements of section forty-eight, section ten and the zoning bylaw.
But it could be condit- it could be conditional on them meeting the site and backline setbacks or whatever the sign, setbacks are.
So I guess what I would do in that circumstance, um, Gordon, to have them not come back to you, I would say that the building has to either meet the setback or, um, or be subject to the grant of a variance.
Okay. And then after, after the site plan, what is the, um, role of the planning board on enforcement?
Um, so enforcement is, um, under your bylaw, the enforcement is by the building inspector or a designee, um, designated by the board of selectmen.
The planning board doesn't go out and police it?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Gordon, at this point?
Nope.
Like, I'll call on you again. Um, next one that I see is Amy.
Um, Yep. Um, hi, Amy. Um, so you were talking about associate members. Uh, would that apply to the planning board?
It does, provided that your bylaw allows for associate members.
And do you know if ours does?
I don't think it does. So you, if you want associate members, we should probably get that.
No, I'm not saying I want it. I was just asking for clarification because you, you talked about it and I was surprised because I thought that associate members weren't part of us.
No, the statute allows for them.
But not in House acts.
Well, you have to change, the bylaw has to also allow for them. Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, uh, Amy?
Not at this time.
All right. Next one I see is Rick Mary. Rick, did you have any questions?
No, unfortunately I didn't read my, uh, my agenda. I didn't realize I started at six. I didn't get on until almost six-thirty, so I missed a lot. Yeah, I was sitting here actually reading it while I was, uh, while I was killing time, but, uh, so, I mean, it just, I don't really see anything that, uh, I have any questions about right now, only because I missed a lot of it. Um, you know, at the end there with the, um, this, you know, the, the site plan, uh, conditions, stuff like that. Um, it pretty much cut and pretty much says everything right there, I imagine.
Okay. Anyway. Did Mark ever come on board? Does anybody know?
No.
Okay. Um, Amy, I do have a couple of questions, just to clarify. When, um, we're talking about as a matter of right, uh, use. Um, if we've got an application for site plan that potentially, uh, whether it be parking, uh, that would require some relief from this, from another special, uh, permit granting authority, uh, are we still allowed to hear that particular issue? For instance, Health Act has a, a parking regulation. So if we've got a project that for some reason doesn't meet that particular standard, they're in for site plan review. Um, we are still allowed to, to hear that. We would just have to condition it that they would need the, an additional ZBA or no special permit to accomplish what they need.
Correct. So, um, so, um, I've, I've, um, gone through this before with, um, with Mr. Andrews when he was the chairman, that, um, it's my recommendation that site plan come last. So that means that the applicant, say for example, they want to, um, go into the set, the side setback and they need a variance. So they go to the ZBA, they get their variance. So when they actually come to the planning board for site plan review, they are as-of-right and they are meeting all of the so-called zoning, you know, zoning requirements because they have this variance. Um, and then they go through site plan and site, you know, site plan is going to, you know, include fencing and landscaping and moving the dumpster and things like that. It's not going to make the whole project change. Um, and so therefore, you know, it's easier for you guys. Now, that's not how, that's not how your bylaw is drafted. Your bylaw is drafted that site plan comes first. And so by, because site plan comes first, yes, I would, I would suggest that there be a condition that, you know, for example, the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw are met. And if they're not met, then, I mean, if, so if, if an applicant comes to you showing their building within the side setback and you guys, you guys, um, you know, issue site plan approval because it's an as-of-right use. So you issue site plan approval and you have a condition that says that you have to, uh, you know, you have to get a variance because you have to, you have to, you know, you have to abide by the zoning bylaw. So a variance means you are in compliance. And then they go to the ZBA and the ZBA says no. They then have to relocate their building and, and, you know, in my opinion, depending on, depending on how much they, you know, how different that building's going to be, they have to go back to you. So they have to go back to the planning board to get a new site plan because it doesn't, you know, it's not the same as the plan that was approved.
So we really need to change that bylaw. Uh, I just want to, just a little clarification. When you say as-of-right, once the, when you take that literally, if we have a, a, the planning board has a plan that doesn't have the, the necessary, uh, parking spaces, once that is, permit is issued from the ZBA or there, they get some relief from that. Now, that, that, does that now automatically be, become a matter of right?
They have, so, so there's, um, there's an as-of-right use and then there's dimensional compliance. So an as-of-right use means that they, it's a use that's allowed. If they get a variance from the zoning board of appeals, then they are dimensionally compliant.
Okay. All right. Did I miss any of the members? Um, we're getting close on time. I would take a question from any of the ZBA members. Um, if they have any. Um, hearing none, Charlie, there's no indication that any-
I have, I have a question after listening to the, to this. So our bylaw, as we went over in the, um, in the presentation that you gave, that, that allows all the other boards thirty days to give the planning board notes. So is it my miss, uh, so when the site plan comes to us, we have all these notes of what needs to happen, right? So wouldn't it, wouldn't it be the same thing that if all the other boards went through and then the site plan failed, that they'd have to go through all the other steps again too? So it's sort of apples and oranges? I mean, you'd have to start over with other boards if you needed to go to another site anyway, right?
No, I, I meant moving the building on the same site.
Okay, but it could happen if it started with the other boards too, correct?
Um, no. So the other boards would, so for example, when a, um, if an applicant came to you and they had a building within the setback, um, and they went through site plan, the first thing, what the, um, either the building inspector or the zoning board of appeals, their comment would be they are within, um, the side setback and they need a variance. And that's the comment. And so then you guys would condition it on them receiving that side setback. If they don't receive the side setback and they, they move the building completely to the other side of the lot or something, then they have to come back to the planning board. And then the next time they come back, the comment from ZBA would be, or, or the building inspector would be, they meet all, um, all setbacks.
Okay. And so, um, then I would think, uh, to ask you, what are the reasons to get a variance?
Um, for a variance, it's, um, it's under section, um, ten. It's, um, soil shape or topography. So you have, your lot has to be unique, um, with regard to the shape of the lot, the soils on the lot or the topography. There has to be a hardship and it has to be not more detrimental to the, um, surrounding neighborhood.
And what are hardships?
I'm sorry?
Amy, Amy, so, um, I'm just, I'm gonna kind of interject here. That though, the questions you have, good questions, but they're more for the ZBA. We've got, we've got a timeframe here and, um, I, I think you can hold the questions and be more than happy to send them out to her, but I'd like to stay focused on site plan and special permit that's under the planning board authority.
Yeah, under the statute, under forty-eight, the only, the only board that can grant a variance is the zoning board of appeals.
Correct.
Yes.
Um, if I know-
Could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could I have another question?
Yeah.
Amy, um, on these site plans coming to the zoning, to the, uh, planning board, isn't it really, um, the right way to come before the planning board is to have a written zoning determination with the application? Or do we make the determination of the zoning?
Oh, no, but, um, I'm not sure what you mean by a written zoning determination. Um, so they can't get a building permit?
Do we make the, do we make the determination of what the zoning is? In other words, we have, you know, retail store, we have, um, you know, all, all the different criteria that we have there. And if you have something that doesn't look like it, it fits exactly, then we need to get a determination.
Possibly, but your, um, your, your criteria for a, uh- Possibly, but your, um, your, your criteria for a, um, for a site plan is pretty broad. It's, you know, any, it's the creation or enlargement of any, you know, commercial, industrial, you know, buildings. So I'm not sure how you would need a, I mean, I guess maybe, maybe the expansion would be a question.
Well, I think, I, I think before we've been told that we don't look at the zoning. So, I mean, it's a conflict. If, if, if we're supposed to look at the zoning to make sure that this fits the site plan and the zoning. Um, I mean, we, we've been told before, you don't look at zoning. Well, I think that's part of our job is to look at the zoning. It may not go to the zoning board for an appeal or, or for a special permit or whatever. So we are the board that will be looking at the zoning to make sure that it fits, correct?
No, the, um, the building inspector is the one that determines whether the project meets the zoning bylaw. So he cannot issue a building permit. He or she cannot issue a building permit un- unless that project meets all of the zone, meets the zoning bylaw, meaning it meets, it's the use is allowed. Um, it has a site plan if it, if it's required site plan. So say we're talking about a commercial use. There can be no building permit unless the use is allowed. It has special per, it has a site plan approval. And if for some reason it's within a setback or something like that, it has a variance from the zoning board of appeals. If it's a use that needs a special permit from either the zoning board or the planning board, um, then he cannot issue a building permit unless that special permit has been granted, site plan approval has been obtained, and they are not within the, um, setbacks, or if they are within the setbacks, that they have a variance.
So they come to us for a site plan. We okay the site plan. Now they go to the building inspector and he decides it doesn't fit?
And that's why.
That's why I'm saying, shouldn't we have a-
Site plan should be last.
Shouldn't we have a written determination first? And then we know what zoning that it falls under. Other than that, we have to determine what we think it is.
So, so you, your question, there's a question as to what the use is? So if the use is commercial or not?
Well, I mean, some things fall under the, um, the well protection. Some things fall under the other things, so-
But that's on the zoning, that would be on the zoning map, so.
So we determine that.
If it's, if it's there, if it's, if it's, I mean, if it's in the, if it's in the wellhead protection, but the, they shouldn't need a special permit from you unless they went to and get to get a building permit and they were told you're in the wellhead protection district, so you have to go to, you have to go get a special permit.
But that's what I'm saying. So when, when people come to us as a site plan, they don't go to the building inspector first, they come to us.
And they're doing that, I guess, on their, with their own research, maybe? Their own review of the, of the zoning map and the overlays, I think.
If I can just interject, I, I think Gordon's correct, but the problem is that in our bylaw, it provides that they come for site plan approval first, where they should be coming last. So I think-
Right.
With, with the change in the zoning bylaw, uh, to answer his question that we're not looking at zoning per se. We're looking at what authority the planning board has, but if our bylaw was changed, all that information would be there and we'd have that before we saw that site plan.
Okay, but one thing I did wanna, I do want to point out real quick, um, Gordon, or Mr. Andrews, I'm sorry, is that, um, we recommend that a, the building department, whether it be the building inspector, the building commissioner, that they do not issue any written decision unless they have a full building permit application in front of them. So, and that's because somebody can come in and say, hey, I want to build on this lot. And the building inspector will say, well, you can't because of X, Y, Z, but then he sees the plan and he, you know. So if there's a full building permit application in front of him, then there, you know, there can be a written decision. That's not a big deal. But if there's not a full building permit application in front of them, they, they can't. There's, um, there's case law where, you know, unfortunately, the building commissioner said one thing because he didn't have the full application in front of him and it turned into a huge thing, so.
It just seems like we're in a catch twenty-two that, um, you know, we, we have a site plan, we approve the site plan, the people go forward and it gets denied somewhere else. I mean, it just seems like, um, it's, it's not fair to the applicant to find out afterwards.
Which is why I think site plan, you know, should be last because you guys are not granting any, any necessary relief.
Yeah, I'm not arguing with you as far as that, but I'm, I'm looking at a way that, I mean, right now, that's the situation we have.
Yeah, we can work on it. We can work on something, some kind of procedure to figure that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could probably do that. Yeah.
Amy, we're getting close to time. I know you have a, another, another hearing.
Can I, can I just interject, interject one thing that came up from her speaking, from all of the conversation?
It's always this brief because we've only got another matter of, I think, five minutes and she's got, we've got three minutes, so.
I could be a little late.
Okay, so I wanted to just say it's confusing when we say how we're going to change the bylaws in order to fix something when we're trying to find out procedure of today and now. I think it's more, more useful to talk about what we can do versus changing things because that would mean that fifty percent of a town meeting needs to, or three quarters, depending on what the changes are going to be that we have in front of us in a minute. But, you know, we have what we have until the town votes to change it. So it's confusing to state, we need to change this or whatever. I just need to know what we need to do on what we have now. Because that's, 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 it gets too confusing on the what ifs, what ifs, what ifs.
Uh, uh, Amy, I agree. I'm sorry, Ms. Troop, I agree. I agree with you. Um, so what I, I, I mean, I have suggestions for you guys. So, um, what other towns do are, um, they have a, um, a checklist that goes through the boards. And in that checklist is where the building department would say, you need to go here, here and here. The board of health would say you need this, this and this. And we can, we can, we can figure this out.
So would that be not the note that we would receive from all of the other boards? And that would be the determinations of the building inspect, there are the fire, the police and everything else. And not if it came to us all in writing, then we'd have it all in front of us and we'd know.
Yeah, and, and that would be-
Basically our procedure.
And, correct. And so, um, but I'm not sure that you have an actual, you know, form that goes, that circulates around. Which maybe might help you guys, you know, with all, you know, if you guys have continual questions about things from different boards, we can maybe put that on and they can address it. You know, it'll be right in front of them.
We do have a checklist when they come in.
I'm saying for the, for going to all of the other boards. So, you know, for example, you know, the conservation commission will, you know, determine, is this within a hundred feet of a wetland or resource area? Do you have jurisdiction? The board of health, do they have, you know, do they have a title five permit? Do they have the, you know, the adequate space, you know, things like that?
That makes sense. We're, we're getting close on time. Are you going to be able to finish off?
Yeah. So I, I just, I, I think that it's important to go through this, um, the Housing Choice Act real quick.
Okay.
Um, so this was, um, you know, without a doubt, it was sprung on everyone. It was, um, it was within the budget, the legislation that had the budget. And, um, it's the Housing Choice Act of twenty twenty. And, um, you know, what this does to municipalities is, um, it, they have some mandatory definitions. Um, but one of the most important things is that, um, they require multifamily housing in MBTA communities. Um, and Halifax is an MBTA community. Um, the other thing that they do is there are certain bylaws that can be enacted without the two-thirds vote at town meeting. They can be enacted by a simple majority at town meeting. And then the other thing is that there are special permits that can be granted without the super majority, meaning the four-fifths. They can be, and they can be granted with, um, a majority. The other thing is that, um, you know, that they, it allows judges to require up to a fifty thousand dollar bond for, um, that the plaintiff has to put up if they're appealing, you know, a zoning decision. So one of the things with regard to the multifamily housing, an MBTA community has to have a district of reasonable size for multifamily housing permitted as of right. There can be no age restrictions and it has to be suitable for families with children. The reasonable size is defined as a gross density of fifteen units per acre or more. And they're, that's subject to wetlands and title five, and it has to be within a half mile of a commuter rail station. If the municipality fails to adopt, um, um, multifamily housing, then, um, they are no longer eligible for grants from the state, from the Commonwealth. And, um, the grants that are listed, you know, are Mass Works, um, Local Capital Project Fund, Housing Choice Initiatives, things like that. But the most important, um, the most important thing to note on this is that, um, the legislation says that DHCD and MBTA are going to come up with parameters as to this, you know, multifamily housing. And DHCD did send out a one and a half page, you know, quick, um, little thing saying, bear with us, we don't have our, you know, we don't have this ready, but, you know, in the meantime, no one is going to be, you know, dinged for not having this. So, you know, grants are still eligible. We are advising that, um, we are advising that grants, um, we are advising that towns not implement, you know, do not do zoning changes until these parameters come out from DHCD and the MBTA. Um, because we, we don't know, um, you know, what they're going to say. So for example, you could have within a half mile of your, uh, of a train station, you could have areas that are just absolutely not adequate for development. Um, and so, you know, I, 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 I think they're going to come up with some, you know, creative ways around this. Because they're, they're going to have some, some issues. And so, so this is a, um, you know, I, I, I don't want to say that it's, it, you know, it was not well thought out, but, um, apparent, I, I am saying that. I don't think it was very well thought out. Um, but it's, it's here, it's now, um, it is, it is, it was enacted. So, um, you know, we should think about it. Um, obviously, it's nothing that we have to deal with right away. But once the, um, once DHCD and the MBTA come out with these, you know, parameters and, and regulations, et cetera, we, we will need to, to deal with this at some point. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Okay. Amy, do you have any time for questions? Uh, we're getting at seven oh four.
I, a quick, sure, if there's quick ones, yes.
Is there any quick questions? I, I, I know I do have one and it's strictly on the voting. Uh, are there any questions from any members of the board?
I don't have any.
I will. But go ahead, Alan.
No, go ahead.
No, you can go first. You had it first. Go ahead.
No, uh, my, my, my question is on the, uh, on the voting requirements. Okay, um, it's on the voting requirements. Is this, I, I understand it's a legislative body. This voting requirements do reflect on some issues that the planning board has or is it strictly town meeting?
No, so there are certain, there are certain special permits that are, um, going to be by majority vote. So that would be, you know, multifamily, um, although you guys, um, so, um, cluster developments, there, there's nothing that you guys actually have in your bylaw, but if you were to put them in your bylaw, they would be planning board special permits usually.
And the rest of it would be zoning articles, uh, instead of having the, uh, you need a majority vote versus, um, super majority. Amy, true?
Um, Amy, um, so you, we have to apply for grants or something like this? Uh, uh, am I misunderstanding that in a quick read of this? This is just automatic or is it something that if we apply for grants, that this would be part of our issue?
No, you, you, if you do, if cities and towns do not enact this, if they do not comply with this legislation, they are not eligible for grants. So for example, mass, the mass works grants, those are the most common. Those are the grants that, um, they put in, you know, they, they redo intersections, you know, things like that. They do, you know, hundreds of thousand dollars worth of grants. You wouldn't be, the town would not be eligible for those.
So like complete streets?
Exactly, exactly.
And then if, so if we don't enact it, we just don't get to comply for those gamble anyways?
You do not, you're not, you're not eligible, correct?
That's all right.
Anything else, any members of the board? Um, and I don't see anybody. Charlie, you know, if somebody's got their hand up, anybody from the ZBA, if they got one quick question. Uh, we're running a little short and I don't want to make Amy late for the next appointment.
I, I don't, but I'd like to thank Amy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Amy, and I thank you very much. I think the, the, um, the meeting we had was very helpful. I know that there's going to be some other issues that we're going to need some clarification on and hopefully we can send them to you and get them back in writing.
Yes. It was nice to see you guys.
Okay.
So, all right. I hope everybody stays well.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
So we still have a quorum, okay. Uh, our next item, um, we don't have any appointments tonight. They've canceled. But our next item for discussion is going to be two forty-one Franklin Street. Uh, and I'll just kind of bring the board up to date. The, the, uh, the assessors found some sort of a problem with the, the mylar or one of the plans that was submitted. So I believe that we have sent that information off to the applicant and we're in the process of, um, he's in the process of getting those corrections. Uh, Joanne, just correct me if I'm wrong. She there?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody, any questions on that?
Um, I guess that's why the as-built and the, um, signed site plan weren't in our planning board files today.
Could you explain that? Say that again?
Two forty-one Franklin Streets as-built and site plan are not in the file.
Oh, okay. If they're not in the file, uh, she might have withheld them because we do have an issue with a Scribner error. So that's probably why they weren't in the file.
And that's why the signed site plan's not in the file as well?
I, I, well, the site plan is a little different than the, than the, uh, the original plan. So we're not in a position to act on it, so I think-
Yeah, but shouldn't it be in the file?
No, it shouldn't be. If we, once we get the correct plan and everybody, which is going to be the as-built and all the numbers on the as-built, everybody will look at it and then sign off on the site plan once the as-built is sufficient. Okay, next item on the agenda is Autumn Lane. I don't have any status on that. I don't know if anybody else does. Uh, Pastel Lane, we are still working on that. I do not have anything substantial to update at this point. And I don't think, Joanne, we haven't heard from any of them, correct?
No, correct.
Great. Uh, our next item is Complete Streets program. We did submit, or I believe Joanne submitted that to the Highway Surveyor. So I imagine that once that gets through the process, uh, the, the girl from Complete Streets will be getting back to, to us on whatever the process is to determine which projects are going to make the cut.
Well, we, won't we have to enact the new bill to be eligible for it?
Enact the new bill?
Yeah, that's what we just got done talking about with Amy Questle.
No, what she said was if we do not have some zoning districts, that we will not be eligible. We're eligible for the Complete Streets as of now under this program. If we don't do something whenever the legislature agrees to give us whatever timeframe, then, uh, we won't be eligible after that. But right now, I believe that those funds have been sort of set aside depending on what we pick.
And we have to engineer all those plans? In order to-
I don't have the answer for that. You're gonna have to, that's, that's a, that's a question for Highway. All we did was come up with some ideas and we submit that to Highway. Here we'll talk with the Complete Streets representative and they'll come up with whatever they need for engineering plans. I, I do not have an answer for that question. they'll come up with whatever they need for engineering plans. I, I do not have an answer for that question. Okay, next item on the agenda, I don't want to mess up his name, is Stefan Diamandis. Is he in three hundred Plymouth Street Brookside Construction? Is he with us?
Uh, he, he's not, but my name's Michael Joyce with Joyce Consulting Group. We're the civil engineers. I'm, I'm the here representing uh, Brookside Construction.
Okay, um, I believe that this three hundred Plymouth Street drainage plan was submitted by another organization or another company a while ago?
Uh, possibly, not to my knowledge. Um, but w- we prepared a drainage plan for Brookside Construction. Um, we completed it about November. Um, so I don't know if they submitted it previously or not.
Okay, did you submit a plan to us, sir?
Uh, Brookside Construction did, uh, uh, as far as, uh, from what I understand. Um, Christian was supposed to be here tonight, but he has um, he's, he's recovering from COVID right now, so he wasn't able to attend the hearing. Um.
Wait, so to the other board members, I think if we, I'm going to bring you to your attention to page number five. Um, it appears to be a plan for three hundred Plymouth Street. We did see this plan from another organization, but that's, that's, that's okay. Um.
I wish I had seen it.
All right, well, this is Joyce, you are Joyce Consulting?
I am, yes.
Okay, um. Podersky, I believe a Podersky organization?
Uh, so they, they did meet with P- Podersky, um. This, from what Christian told me, they met with P- Podersky, um. Podersky recommended that they have an engineer prepare a plan, which is where, when Christian reached out to me. I, I didn't realize Podersky had submitted anything to you. Uh, I had received um a Title V plan that had a kind of a concept of what they wanted, Podersky wanted to do. I don't know if that was submitted to, to the planning board.
Okay, so that, that clears that up. If you do not mind, um, we've, many of the boards have questioned what this is, what type of project and what are you trying to accomplish? Um, and I guess we're gonna have to make a determination as to whether or not the planning board has any jurisdiction on whatever you're doing. So if you could kind of explain what you're doing out there.
Sure, um, do you want me to share a screen and, and kind of point out the plan or what's the best way to, do you, do you have the plan?
Yes, uh, no, I think you ought to share it for those members of the public that that don't have it, plus the um, you, you got a PDF with very, very small print, which is.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll share, I'll share and give you, you know, the information I have and then obviously if you need to um, speak with Christian, we can do that at a, a further meeting, so. Uh, let me get that rolling. Uh, let's see here. Okay, so this is the uh, proposed site plan. Um, so just to give you a little background, this is the intersection of Plymouth Street and Mont Ponset Street. Um, there is, it's a Cape Cod Pizza, uh, Verizon Wireless, uh, bike shop. There's six, six commercial units in the building. Um, what, what has happened in the past is these roof leaders here uh, for this whole roof section are collected by a dormer in the front and brought down the front of the building. An outlet, there's outlets to the pipes along the face of the curb, along the parking area. So they come out kind of between each unit, sorry about that yellow block there, um, an outlet into the parking area. Just, it's your standard six inch, uh, four inch PVC piping. Um, what has happened is over the years with the repaving of the lot and the um, kind of snow storage up against the curbs, these outlets tend, have a tendency to get clogged. And when that happens, the stormwater backs up into those columns in the, the buildings, causing flooding into the building, so the, the seams aren't tight. So in order to resolve that drainage issue, or what uh, we're proposing to do is collect all the stormwater the same way, uh, put new PVC, but then bring it out below grade at the curb line and direct them to two infiltration areas. Uh, one, one on the uh, western side and one on the eastern side. Uh, those stormwater systems have been sized for uh, a little bit over one inch of rain, uh, or the minimum size goal was one inch of rain, which is ninety percent of the rainstorms. So in cases where you have larger storm events, they would overflow through the um, inspection ports that locate at the surface of the parking area and then be directed towards the onsite catch basins, uh, similar to what they do today. So today, they just outlet from the curbs onto the parking area and then go directly to the catch basins. Um. So from an engineering standpoint, um, the, basically it's each of the two infiltration areas are consists of nine storm tech, storm water chambers, um, that surrounded in crushed stone below grade, um, and then, then like I said, in larger storm events, those would overflow and go into the catch basins uh, that are there today. Uh, a- as far as if there's, I don't think there's any um other proposed improvements um, to the site, to my knowledge, but I can't speak to kind of the grander scheme of the project outside of uh, the engineering aspects of it, so.
Okay, I mean, that's little clarification. Now we've done, we've figured out what you're, you're attempting to do. We didn't know that there was an expansion of that facility or what, but you're just trying to correct some drainage issues.
Yeah, so that's when I first met with Christian on site, they, he gave me the background that the um, stormwater was basically coming into the buildings um, during some of the storm events. Um, so this is an effort to rectify that situation.
Okay. I, I'm not hundred percent sure on jurisdiction. I, I see a couple of jurisdictional areas, but I'm gonna uh, reach out to the board members to see what their thoughts are. Um. Let me see, I'm gonna start with Gordon, I think you were up top. Uh, you got any comments or I guess what I'm kind of looking for, this looks to me like it's multi-jurisdictional. Uh, you do have some drainage, which means that we probably need some little modification of a site plan. But I believe with stormwater management, uh, you need some conservation intervention because there's, they're the division in, in town that handles the stormwater management. Um, Gordon, I don't know if you agree or disagree.
Well, my, my, uh, my comment would be that right now, the uh, catch basins are handling everything. So now you're gonna divert some of that to these underground um, infiltration. I would say that you're taking some of the water off the parking lot quicker, that's all. It, it's not getting a chance to get mixed with oil.
Right, it, it's all rooftop runoff, um, so it's clean runoff and then that's, we're basically providing additional onsite storage for stormwater, uh, prior to it flowing offsite, that was the goal.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so I do see it coming before the planning board. Um, whereas we're already taking care of that amount of water, I, I don't think that there's really any other issue here other than that we need to incorporate that. Um, so we have a copy of it in the, in the file for the site plan.
Okay, so I, so again, um, uh, Mr. Joyce, it, it, it does appear that you're gonna have to do some sort of a site plan modification. I don't know what the original site plan was. You can reach out to the the office secretary and see if there is something on file. Uh, let me just go to, go to, go to Amy. Amy, you got any questions in this? Amy Troop, are you still with us?
I am, yes, I am. Um, no, I, I actually concur with Gordon. I just was thinking that we just need an update on their site plan.
Okay, um, Rick, any comments?
No, it makes, makes a perfect sense to me, what they're trying to do there. Um, I'm assuming that as far as depth of water table and all, I ask, you know, this little plan I'm looking at is hard to, to see, but um, did they have to be designed a certain distance from water table or as far as the roof drainage?
But, yeah, so they're, they're required to keep separation of two feet to groundwater and, and what we used were um, when they did work to the existing septic system, they had a test pit, test pit three here and test pit SEA one. Um, and we, they determined groundwater, we're maintaining two feet of separation uh, from groundwater based on those two exploratory test pits.
Yeah, but as far as the soils, you don't have to have anything closer to those uh, to those leaching chambers?
And we could, we could certainly um, perform additional test pits. We, we didn't think it was necessary, but um, it's something we could do, uh, you know, it's um, we could even um, that, the reason we didn't propose is just because it is an active parking lot, but.
Well, yeah, I understand that. Like, you know, I drove by after I saw this plan, I said, I don't see any holes dug, but now I can see why.
Yeah, I mean, but we could certainly do test pits uh, prior to installation or something and adjust. Those, those aren't the smallest chambers, you know, we, we may have a bigger footprint, but we'd have to um, if we had to decrease the profile, so to speak, so.
Yeah, I don't know if it's our call or what, I'm just curious.
Yep.
So.
Is Mark Williams on? Did anybody know?
No, he's not, unfortunately.
Right, um.
Alan?
Yes.
Um, what I would suggest is you, you have a plan, we just um, put that in the file. I mean, uh, there, there's a file on plan now, he has this plan. I don't think we need to redo the, the original site plan. We just put this in as an amendment to it.
Okay, I, I probably concur, um, Mr. Joyce. The only thing I, I would have a couple of concerns is A, you got a big plaza there that's had some issues with septic systems. I want to make sure that wherever you put these infiltration basins, that it's not going to impede on an expansion area. That septic system's been in there for a number of years. It appears to me that the uh, the basin on the right might be might affect any potential expansion for the septic system. Um, the other question I have is, and on the plan, and you know, this is very small scale, there's no indication as to where the, the catch basins are. So that, I understand if that does fill up, the water's going to be coming out on top of the ground. Do we know, or can you establish that the affluent is going to be heading to a basin or near a basin? Um, and I'm not familiar with which basins are on site. But if my, if, if what you explained is correct, when these fill up, if you, if they're surcharged, okay, there's going to be an outlet in the middle of that parking lot that the, the affluent from the roof is going to run onto the parking lot.
Yeah, c- correct, so there, there's two inspection ports in this area and then there's a catch basin right the, the entrance here. This is the, the entrance island, so there's in on this side, out on this side. Uh, this is the signalized intersection. Um, and then there's another catch basin in this area as well and a catch basin here. So these are basically your three low points on the site, uh, here, here and uh, here as well. So this, this um, infiltration area would overflow towards this catch basin and this one would overflow towards the catch basin at the center of the site. Uh, and, and we tried to kind of break up the um, drainage areas so that they kind of flew to uh, flowed, not flew, um, towards the catch basins that they would initially, this catch basin probably would receive flow from these three and we, we put it in this area, but the, it also flows in that direction as well, so. Ultimately, the stormwater that hits this catch basin, actually all three catch basins flow in that direction, so.
Okay, the only thing is if you did have an overflow and basin, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it basin number one on the right.
Yep.
The affluent would be going right through the drive in and out area. So hopefully you wouldn't have any icing situations. Um, to me, it's an improvement, uh, but to, I, I would suggest, and I did, we did require this with, from the Board of Health, that the septic system for Hawaii Gardens be placed on there, um, on the plan and no one got back to us and I, I would suggest that you try to determine through whatever engineering, engineering standards you want, that these infiltration basins don't impede on the expansion of the septic system, because that will have to be done at some point. And, you know, there are regulations where infiltration basin, depending on where it is, is twenty-five to a hundred feet away.
Sure.
That would be my only suggestion.
Yeah, and we can certainly update the plan. Um, units five and six, as you know, have a separate septic system that's um, to the rear. I, I don't know, I, I assume you don't know where it is, but five and six have a separate sep- uh, excuse me, separate septic system, system to the rear, to the rear of the building, but we could certainly uh, revise the plan and, and show, you know, s- show that as well so that we have all setbacks, um, a- and show the dimensions as well, uh, distance from existing leaching areas.
Yeah, I, I thought I did see a plan, um, that showed the existing septic system uh, and the expansion area for, you call it five and six, everybody in town knows it as the old Hawaii Gardens.
Right, yeah.
So I, I guess my suggestion would be that, you know, that we could probably do it on a modification of a site plan, but we're, we're looking at stormwater management. Um, and you can, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, that's jurisdiction of the, of the uh, Conservation Commission. So you're more than welcome to update the plan. You can take some of our suggestions into consideration. Come back to us or go to the Conservation first and see if they have any issues. If not, you can come back to us. Um, I, I really don't see a major problem. To me, it's going to be improvement. Because I know when you're out there, those, the downs by, downspouts come just below the, just on top of the pavement in most of the areas and it runs right across the parking lot.
Um, because you say that, would it be fair to maybe think that a peer review should happen for the drainage since we usually get that on all the modifications and site plans that we have? Should we have somebody do a peer review of his final plan that he's proposing to do?
It's probably not a bad idea. Um, Mr. Joyce, what we normally do in our regulations is we have um, a peer review who would um, take a look at your drainage calculations. Uh, he would take a look at what you have for infiltration and, and then um, based on you know, the twenty-five, fifty or a hundred year storm, um, he'd verify that your calculations are adequate.
Yeah, um, I, I mean, personally, I don't have any issue with that. Um, I, I'd imagine that the peer reviews, um, fee is passed on to the, the applicant, so I, I can't speak for the applicant. The only thing I will say is, um, you know, if they were, I don't know that, if they were to re- kind of replace this in kind, I don't know that they'd be required to be subject to a peer review and it certainly wouldn't be the improvement that this proposed plan is. Um, so that would, it's kind of putting on my client hat versus my engineering hat, that would be, I guess, the the argument for not having a peer review. Um, but uh, like I said, I'm, I'm fine with it either way. It's really, uh, but I don't want to speak for the applicant, so.
Just, just bear in mind, we do, we will need an application for an amended site plan. So as regulations, all right, we do in fact require a peer review. I, I think it would be to everybody's advantage to have the calculations um, complete to make sure that if for some strange reason it didn't accommodate it, we've got flooding coming out of the, the parking lot and out into Plymouth Street.
Alan, can I speak?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, a- again, as, as my comment before, we're already taking all that water in that parking lot right now. All, all he's doing is diverting the runoff from the roof into those. If that bubbles up, it would have come off the roof anyways. So it really is not impacting any more than what we had. The stormwater management does come unto us. It only goes to conservation if, if it's in the wetland area. This is not. So I mean, it is in the purview of the planning board to take this under advisement right now. And um, like I said, as, as far as going to peer review, it went out before for all the stormwater management and what's there is handling it. So like I said, uh, my opinion is he's just splitting it up, he's, he's doing another step in between. I really don't see any point.
Okay, a, a point well taken. Uh, I don't believe planning board has jurisdiction on stormwater management. Uh, we can get that clarified. Um, my suggestion at this point, Mr. Joyce, would be to um, you know, talk to whoever's the engineer and make sure, or your engineering, to make sure that your basins aren't going to in, impact an expansion area on the septic system. And then in the meantime, uh, we can attempt to determine, well, at our next meeting, we can discuss whether or not, or just what type of plan you're going to need. I mean, you're going to need something to go in front of us. Um, if it's an amendment, I don't know that our bylaws allow that, but I would assume that we could do an amendment to the site plan just to review it and then the board as a whole can make a, uh, decision as to whether or not they want to have it sent out for site plan.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate the feedback.
Anybody, anybody else on the board members, any comments? Is everybody?
We just lost Alan.
I don't have any more. You know, the only thing I was concerned about is where the soil, you know, the test holes are, that's all. That's almost something you could do in the field when the time came or something, instead of digging holes in the existing parking lot.
Yeah, when they go to put it in.
Yeah, we'd certainly be, if, I don't know if this is something that would be conditioned, but you know, you certainly be amenable to. Performing a soil evaluation in the areas of the proposed infiltration areas prior to installation.
Yeah, it'd be a lot less impact than the situation now. Makes a lot of sense. You know, who would be. Inspecting that would be the engineer, would be you guys or how?
Yeah, I'm a licensed soil evaluator, so I could do it.
I mean, you know, that this part of town here, I mean, if you don't like the material, you move over 10 feet, you know? I mean, so you never know, it's pretty far away from those test holes, so. You know, of course, I'm sure if you put them in, if you run into something, you're going to deal with it. Your common sense would tell you that.
I, the only thing that I was thinking since Alan mentioned it is the test bit to the right. I think he called that test bit one. If you did move it over closer to the SEA-1 test hole that you've done in the past, would that?
I got apologized for some reason. I thought my computer was plugged in, and it wasn't, so I lost everybody.
It happens. It happens.
How do I get? Sharon? How do I get back on so you can see me?
So I was wondering if you moved it over towards, is it possible to move it over towards the. Test pit that you have to avoid any overflow going across where people go in and out?
Yeah, probably that is a reserve for the septic.
Oh, that, okay. So that's why I was wondering and asking. I was just trying to see if I could help.
He's keeping the separation from the septic system to those pits as much as you can is what it looks like.
So that soil absorption, I'm sorry. That soil absorption is the septic system? Is that what I'm to understand?
Yes, this box here is the.
I didn't know if it was part of an old drainage, because I've never seen a septic labeled that. Sorry.
I'm back out again. I don't know what I did.
You're here, Alan.
I can't see anybody. I heard the question, and the test pits are where the original perk tests were done, so. What they probably should be looking at is to take the. The infiltration basin, I can't see the. And put it more. Westerly? No, I guess it'd be more westerly towards the parking area. That would give them some room for for expansion if need be for the septic system. Am I back on here? I have no idea.
Yeah, and we'll revisit, probably update the plan to show the reserve area. That way, there's no question about where it is. And if we need to relocate the stormwater infiltration areas to accommodate that, that's not an issue. And provide, I'll even add a note to the plan that says, provide. Conformatory test pits prior to installation to determine seasonal high groundwater. In the locations of the infiltration areas.
If my memory is correct, my other hat, I believe they did some test pits out there. Not too long ago, so you're more than happy to check with the Board of Health office to see. What test pits are available, and you could probably use those, because I know you need to be two feet. From groundwater or monitoring, and you should have that. I think what we really need to do is clarify the jurisdictional. It's, I'm under the impression, and we can get, I'll get, try to get that clarified as to who handles stormwater management. But we've got time for that. You've got things you need to do. So if you can get that stuff together for us, now we have some idea as to what's happening out there. And it sounds to me like it's an improvement, especially if you got water running into the building. Anything else? Go ahead.
What is the timeframe you're looking at?
I'd have to. Ask Brookside Construction. I don't know what their timeframe is, but I imagine they'd be probably doing this in the in the springtime after. After the winter, but I'm not entirely sure.
That's it for me.
Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let me just go back to my. Agenda. Okay, next item on our agenda for discussion is Zero Mont Ponce Street. Gordon, you made a request. For a site plan stump dump gravel room screening, materials, hours of operation. That request was very unclear, so I kind of, I've got some questions myself. In trying to find out where this was, the assessors have about 30 Zero Mont Ponce Streets. So can you clarify for the board where you're talking about? Map, parcel, owners, whatever?
I don't have the map parcel here. But if you go down 58 towards Plumpton on the left-hand side. There's some concrete blocks there. And it's listed as Zero Mont Ponce Street. And it looks like there's a stump dump going on in the back. There's gravel operation. There's lume operation going on there. There's trucks going in and out. And I've received numerous calls. As to what's going on and what the hours of operation are and where the site plan is. I was into the office today. I couldn't find any site plan for that, so I think it's something the board needs to take a look at.
Okay.
It's a business operation there, and it doesn't look like there's a site plan.
Okay, I think that without knowing exactly what you're talking about, mapping lot and giving everybody the advantage to. To. To know where we're talking about, you couldn't find a site plan if you didn't have a map and lot or you didn't have a street address. So at this point, what do you want to do with this? Do you want to provide us with some proper information? I don't know if we can make any sort of decision on. On an operation. But we don't know where it is. So do you want to try to provide that information, or how do you want to handle this?
I'll get a lot number and map. But. There's a business being operated down there. It doesn't appear to have a site plan.
Okay, I think it would be important.
You don't seem to know where I'm talking about?
Okay, what my question is asked is.
I ask you, do you not know where I'm talking about?
What I do know is that we've got an issue in front of us that says Zero Mont Ponce Street. So in order to be highly diligent, to make sure that everybody knows what they're talking about. If you received some complaints. A, you could have, A, turn those complaints over to the zoning enforcement officer. If you want to bring them up to us, then that's fine. Just provide us with the correct information as to what we're looking at. Okay, anybody got any questions on that?
I had a question. Wouldn't you have to have the property owner involved, whoever owns it, and have them hear, or how would that work?
Yeah, find, there's no sign saying what's going on there or who owns it or what the business is that's there. There's trucks going in and out of there.
I think if there's been some complaints, then either they go to the zoning enforcement officer, or if they do come to us, we need some more information. So if you want to provide us some more information, then we'll see if it's under our jurisdiction.
Very good.
Okay. Meeting minutes, October 15. I know that there was. Some emails going back on Fourth. On the October 15th meeting minutes, can. Maybe Joanne, you can fill me in on that. Was there an issue with those meeting minutes?
Oh, I didn't have an issue with them. I did send an email to explain that. Just that the ones that were approved and that we just needed Amy's. We didn't actually need Amy's signature on it because we already did have the signatures. But when she came in and saw them, she said that they were the wrong ones, but those were the ones that were approved. I don't know what else to do about that. She just.
Oh, okay, those are the ones.
These are already approved, but improved by three of the members, so.
Okay, so I think Amy, did you abstain on that one? So there's really no issues left on that one. Amy, might correct, did you abstain on that? Amy Troop, you still there?
I am, sorry. I, we're talking about October 15. And I did not abstain on that. I have pictures of when I went into the planning board office to sign the minutes. And they are different, and I will screen share the difference.
Okay, the problem is, Amy, they have been approved.
But the ones that were approved were not the ones that were signed.
They are. Those are the ones that, those were the ones that were approved and signed.
So I have the ones that are approved, and it states, Chapter 90 money is being spent on engineering to apply for grants, and that is not in the minutes that were. Were signed. And that is exactly what was approved on October 15. We can go back to those videos and prove it to you. But I do have a copy of that right now that I will share.
Okay, the problem we have, Amy, is.
I have all those copies, and I've already sent them to everybody. It makes no difference to me which ones were approved, but.
It states it right here. These are the ones that were approved. This is Amy Troop asked about implementation in the contracts. Chapter 90 money is being spent. On the engineering to apply for grants. And the ones that you left out to be signed. That is, that Chapter 90 money is being spent on engineering to apply for grants has been left out. And I do have a picture of those also. Which I will share on the screen.
I deleted that. I mean, I didn't, I didn't make any kind of edits or.
I'm not claiming, I'm claiming it was probably a mistake.
You actually, you actually approved those yourself too, as well.
I'm saying that the ones on the table, so here they are. That were signed, that I emailed and told you were not correct.
I don't know what you want me to say. I just, that's, that's my.
Amy Altrup inquired about the implementation agreements the town would be making and read them aloud. You left out the Chapter 90 money, so that needs to be. Updated, and everybody needs to re-sign. I just showed you the proof. And I emailed you before it went to the town clerk. And this is exactly why. Nobody can stamp my name.
Amy.
I have, I have the ones that you sent me, but if, you know what, it makes no difference to me. If you want to have the other ones approved, that's fine.
They were the ones that were approved, and I'm just asking for the correct ones to be signed and submitted to the town clerk, and that was not what occurred. So if I can make, if you can update that so that we can repair that with the town clerk, that would be absolutely fabulous.
Okay, the only problem we have.
We don't have a problem.
Is that those meetings minutes were approved. Joanne? Can you go back to that vote? Was that a vote by three or four or five members?
They were approved by. By Mark, by Rick, by Alan, and by Amy. But the three of you, and that was on the November shift. And you, and Amy just needed, Amy wanted to sign hers in person, so she just needed to come in and sign hers. The other three were stamped, and she.
Emailed you and let you know of this and sent you the pictures of these both. Next to each other in the email, and you can see plainly that you left out a whole sentence, and that's fine. It was probably a mistake. However, it needs to be updated, which is why I told you I didn't sign it. And it was done, I told you that I wasn't going to sign it until it was correct, and then you still put it into the town clerk's office.
No, I didn't put anything into the town clerk's office. It was just in my office on the table.
Okay, well, somebody did.
Okay, let me just, let me just make a suggestion. Mark's not with us tonight. We have a situation where the. Minutes were, in fact, approved.
Right.
Now, the only way, let me just finish. The only way. That we're going to change these minutes is to have all the members that were there review them.
Alan.
And then we can make a decision on whether or not there needs to be a change. So we'll table this for now. Because there's not a lot of, of, usually particularly discussion on minutes, so. I think at this point. If all those people had voted to approve them. Look at your minutes and the regular minutes, I think that's probably a fair way to resolve it.
We voted on these ones that I have on the screen right now. And that Chapter 90 money is being spent on engineering to apply for grants was voted on on October 15, so we do not need a revote. What we need is that to be put into the minutes, and that is all that needs to happen.
The minutes aren't going to change. These minutes were completed and signed.
They're, but see, they're not the correct ones that we approved, and therefore they're not right.
We wouldn't assign them if they're not the correct ones that were approved.
Did you compare them? Because I did.
Okay.
And you didn't sign them.
We can do one of two things.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman? Alan? Hi, this is Arlana.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm just with my mom. I'm just looking at the minutes. I just have a question because the approved minutes that I see here, there's a section. Under the seven o'clock appointment, complete streets program. It starts, it says Amy Altrup inquired down to the town of Halifax needs to pay. That part was not written by Joanne. That was written by Amy. That was an edit by Amy Troop.
Right, that we approved at our meeting on October 15.
So the ones that you're showing a picture of Amy, don't show that section.
Um, yes, they did.
No, they don't. Look at the picture.
I will. That's what we, that is what we used.
Where is it? I don't see it in that picture.
Right here, in the middle.
October 15.
All of that is written in there. I don't see that.
No, I'm saying.
I think in all fairness, I don't have the October 15 minutes in front of me.
You have them in your pocket, Alan.
Okay, they're in here. Let me just go see which.
There's the approved version, and then there's Joanne's original.
Okay, Joanne, do, let me see, January 7.
In your pocket is page 10 and 11 are Amy's, and those are the approved ones, and then there are mine, which is eight and nine.
But these minutes. Were approved.
Right. Those are Amy's, and those are the ones that were approved.
I see my mom bracketed off the section that Amy added.
Yeah, the minutes, I see an approved version. It says Amy Troop inquired.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, is she updated it after we had the vote. And that's why I'm saying the Chapter 90 money is being spent on engineering to apply for grants was something I stated that we agreed upon being in there that's not in there.
And she, why would, she didn't update it?
I didn't update, it didn't change anything.
That would mean that she took out all of the stuff that you wrote in there.
I didn't update anything. That was, that was the ones that you have are the ones that were submitted.
Just put that back, whatever you, put that screen thing that you just had back up there. Because I have.
Hold on, I'm marking on.
Okay, the minutes that were approved, the minutes that were approved and signed had your comments.
Except for the Chapter 90.
Well, that's something you must have added after Amy, but you wanted it.
It says right here.
How about we look at the video? I'll send you a copy of that video. All right, well, I can do that too. Thanks, Alana.
Okay.
You're welcome.
So let's put this, we're going to put this off. I just want to say that the Chapter 90 reference that I see here is in the minutes. I just want to say that the chapter 90, 90 reference that I see here is in the minutes. So I'm really not sure, Amy, what you're getting at, but what you might want to do is just send everybody whatever the issue is, because I see chapter 90 in here. Okay, we'll just move that off to our next meeting. The January 7th, has everybody had a chance to look at the January 7th meeting? Self-acquired, is everybody on board? No technical difficulties?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear.
Okay, I was off for a little bit.
Okay, is there, is there any, any questions on the January 7th meeting minutes?
Yes, I sent in an update. And Joanne, Joanne sent it to us by email, so you're probably going to need to read it. And we'll have to.
When was this up there?
It's in your email.
Okay, when was the, when was the update?
Today.
He sent it this afternoon after the packets, I already did the packets last.
All right, what I'm, what I'm going to do, Amy, you can't rely on, on sending something at 2:00 in the afternoon and expecting us to get.
I didn't receive, I, I sent it earlier than that and I did only see it today, so I have that right.
Let's hold off on the January 7th meetings and then we'll compare them. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, next item on our agenda is correspondence. Basically, the correspondence was on the Mass Housing Choice Act from Charlie. And he also sent some comments in regarding some bylaws that we will have to make change. I do recall that those bylaws were on our last town meeting warrant, but for some reason they were taken off regarding flood plain and so forth and so on. There's some emails between myself and Sarah Beals from the Bud's Goods. And then there was memos from, oh, I skipped Scott Casagrande. That site plan, that was on the agenda for day, but the plan needs to be modified. There was some notices and letters from a budding towns. Anybody have any questions or issues on those communications? Anybody that didn't read them, just got a question?
Can we go back up to the Sarah Sterns?
Yes, we can.
What, what was the outcome of that? Because we're going to set up a site inspection, right?
Okay, all right.
Is that the one?
No, this particular email was forwarded to, to Joanne, but this was based on some Board of Health comments. And I'll just change hats for a second. The Board of Health has not seen anything on the plans for the Bud's Goods. So I did bring it to Sarah's attention that that needs to be addressed. Because they were applying for the site plan and special permit, but there was major issues on the septic system. So I believe that email came from me, from the Board of Health.
I think there was a, I believe there was a reference in there about the site inspections too. Was there any resolve of that? That's what I was asking.
Okay, the site inspections, they are working on trying to coordinate getting lots staked in a convenient time for all the members to go out. And we are hoping that that's going to be done prior to our March, excuse me, our March 4th meeting. Okay, weather is always an issue, but I know they are working on that, did that answer the question? Anything else on Bud's Goods? All right. Any other business? Well, we do have continued discussions on the 40B. I've asked members in the past if they had any comments, being, it hasn't been any. So anybody that wishes to participate in that, they can on their own basis. And the last order of business, I believe, is that the Zero Two Walnut Street proposed bond, that petition for a Form A has been withdrawn based on some information that the, the applicant received from, from the Board of Health. And we're working on that particular project.
Okay, then if I could respond back to Zero Mont Ponce, the parcel is 95, the map is 95 dash 90 parcel.
Okay, so are you going to prepare something for us at our next meeting? With the owners and so forth? 95, 90 doesn't mean anything to me, so.
Parcel, 95. I mean, map 95 parcel nine dash zero.
Okay, that, that might mean something to someone that's got a zoning map in front of them. So my suggestion would be if you've got some additional information, we can.
I'll do an investigation for it if you want.
Fine.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other business before the planning board that we missed?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Just hold on one second, there, there are members of the audience that have been listening. I don't know if any of those members had any questions or comments on what the board discussed tonight. During our process, I did not ask for any resident participation and I probably should have. So if there is any resident participation, kindly speak up now or forever hold your peace. Nothing, I have a motion on the floor for adjournment, do I have a second?
Excuse me, I just need the members to come in and sign the letter of mutual agreement, the withdrawal. Or I'm, I'm sorry, for the Walnut, the Zero, Zero and Two Walnut Street.
Okay, is it okay for stamps? I'm, I'm okay with a stamp or do you need, you need a written signature on that, Joanne?
I can have the stamps on that, whoever wants them.
You can stamp mine, Rick?
Yeah, I can stamp mine.
Do you need a motion on that?
You do need to motion that, you need to accept it, right?
I'll withdraw my motions to adjourn.
Okay, now, wait a minute, I need a sec, well, we need, go ahead, we didn't get a second on it, so you're okay? And I'm going to need a motion on the Zero Two Walnut Street. So I hear a motion to allow the signatures, stamp signatures to be placed on the letter of mutual, the mutual agreement withdrawal form.
I think, I think you need a motion to accept the mutual agreement for us.
I'll make a motion to accept the Zero and Two Walnut Street Letter of Mutual Agreement Withdrawal Form.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and Gordon seconds it. Now I need to go to a roll call vote. Gordon, you're first, so Gordon.
Gordon, yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ellen Diaz, yes, okay. Why don't I get another motion to either have it signed by stamp or whoever wants to sign their own names.
I'll go in and sign.
I don't think you need a motion, you just need us to verify that we're okay with using our own stamps. And I'm good with my stamp being used to stamp it.
Okay, Amy?
I'm going to go in.
Okay, Rick?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, and Alan, I'm okay to have it signed. Joanne, that should go out right away, so do you need her in? I know we got a snowstorm in the midst. Amy, when can you get in to sign that, so you can leave it on the table?
If, if it's open tomorrow, I'll run in and sign it.
Okay.
I mean, if, if the doors are unlocked.
Okay, I would check to make sure town hall's open.
Yep.
Okay, is there any other matters that in front of the planning board that are either missed or forgot?
I'll re-option the motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, we need to go to a roll call vote, we have a motion and a second, roll call vote is Gordon?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Alan Diaz, yes. Good night, folks, our next meeting is going to be March 4th, 2021.